... component of the Growth Management Act, which was passed by the legislature in 1990. To meet the requirement-- Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Kent City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 17th, 2023. And if you could all please stand and join me in the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
All right, we are going to move on. Kim, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Council President Boyce, Councilmember Fincher--
Here.
Councilmember Core--
Here.
Councilmember Larmour--
Here.
Councilmember Michaux--
Here.
Councilmember Thomas--
Here.
Councilmember Troutner--
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kim. Are there any changes to the agenda from staff or council?
I do have one change to the agenda. We need to add an item 8F, excused absence, for Council President Boyce.
Wonderful. So we will add that item to the agenda. And then could I have a motion to accept the agenda, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The agenda has been approved. Next, we will move on to public communications. And the first item that we have this evening is a public recognition. And it's a proclamation for Hindu-American awareness and appreciation. And we have Krishna here this evening with some guests to accept the proclamation. So I'm going to read it first. And then I would like to welcome you and any guests that you have. And if you'd like to introduce them and say a few words. Whereas the city of Kent is home to a significant Hindu-American population of approximately 3.4 million Hindu-Americans live across the nation. And whereas Hindu-Americans in Kent represent diverse ethnic backgrounds, including individuals of Indian, Pakistani, Bangladeshi, Malaysian, Indonesian, Afghani, Nepali, Bhutanese, Sri Lanka, Fijian, Caribbean, and European descent. And whereas Kent and our nation have greatly benefited from Hindu-Americans, especially through the Vandada philosophy, Ayurvedic medicine, classic Indian art, dance, music, meditation, yoga, literature, and community service. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 130th anniversary of when Hinduism was officially introduced to the United States by Swami Vivekananda at the 1893 World's Parliament of Religions in Chicago, Illinois. And whereas most Hindu immigrants have come to the United States as students in search of better economic opportunities or to unite with family members with others having arrived in the country after facing religious persecution in their countries of origin. And whereas Hindu-Americans share the entrepreneurial spirit of America and contribute to Kent's economic vitality, growth, and well-being. And whereas Hindu temples, organizations, and individuals actively engage in Seva, a sacred word for selfless service towards their fellow human beings through charity and public service. And whereas despite their positive contributions to Kent and this nation, Hindu-Americans face stereotypes and misconceptions about their heritage and have been the targets of bullying, discrimination, hate speech, and bias-motivated crimes. And whereas Hindu-Americans promote the ideals of tolerance, pluralism, and religious freedom, which are inherent to their beliefs and respect the diversity of all faiths. Now therefore, I Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 to be Hindu-American Awareness and Appreciation Month in Kent, Washington, in order to increase awareness and understanding of the Hindu-American community and to encourage all residents to recognize and acknowledge the significant contributions made by Kent residents of Hindu heritage to our city in witness therefore on this day of October 17th. So thank you very much. If you'd like to come up to the podium, you can introduce yourself and then we'll take a photo. I don't know if you want to bring anyone up from the audience or just--
It's a good job.
Okay, so here's the proclamation. We can step up here and do a photo.
Let the group up there.
Yeah, does everyone want to stand up? Does anyone else want to come?
You guys still line up your hands?
Yeah.
I was pointing out to the other--
There you go. There you go.
Les, you want to--
Scoot over. Okay, I'll stand.
Thank you, Brenna.
Thanks, Brenna. I forgot that I could stand.
First of all, namaste to all and greetings from the Hindu community of Kent. On behalf of Hindu-American community, we accept and thank you-- I know Mayor is not here, Mayor Dana Ralph, City Council President, he's also not here-- Mayor Bill Boyce, City Councilors, and City Staff for processing and awarding this proclamation during the festive season of Navratri and Diwali. Today is a very special, as it is a festive season of Navratri, and city of Kent is issuing proclamation about Hindu Heritage Month. This proclamation stands an impactful and meaningful message to the Hindu-American community in greater Kent area and helps educate all Americans about our incredible traditions. Over the last few years, there has been significant growth of Hindu-Americans in region. And we have been contributing to all aspects of public life to our vibrant and diverse social fabric. It would bring the residents immense pride and gratitude to know that the city recognizes the contributions of Hindu-Americans here. I'm happy to share that the Hindu-American community in collaboration with various community organizations like HSS, SEWA USA, BAPS, WATA, Kent Hindu Temple, Saibaba Temple, and others in engaging in driving a service initiative called SEWA Diwali, a food donation campaign during this festive season in Kent and contribute back to the local food banks and the underserved in our neighborhoods. Thank you again for proclamation. And we look forward to continued engagement with City Council on various committee initiatives. Namaste, all.
Thank you again for being here. Next up, Councilmember Larmour, do you have any community events to share?
I do. Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. So upcoming events at Accesso Showware Center on October 25th through 29th, we have Disney on Ice featuring Frozen and Encanto. Seattle Thunderbirds will be playing November 3rd, 11th, and 14th. And then November 4th, we have Skillet and Theory of a Dead Man. It is a Christian heavy metal rock resurrection tour. November 25th, we have Pepe Aguilar. And then December 7th, we have the 101.7 The Wolf's Hometown Holiday. These events can be-- your tickets can be purchased. And you can find out about even more upcoming events at accessoshowwarecenter.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmour. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. Fall curbside cleanup is coming up on November 6th and 13th. And we also have early notice. Winterfest is December 2nd, the Winterfest parade and celebration. And then as I speak right now, Vienna Boys Choir is singing to just tons of people up at Kent Ridge High School. Wonderful get for the city of Kent. And that's just an example of the quality of people who come and play for our Spotlight Series. So if you're looking for good entertainment at a good price, close to where you are, be sure to check out our website. And you can find out all of the different acts who are coming to town as part of the Kent Spotlight Series. And that is it.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Councilmember Michaux.
Thank you, Madam President. The Kent Parks Department is holding a volunteer Arbor Day Celebration, November 4th, at Morrel Meadows Park. You can come and volunteer and plant some trees for Arbor Day.
Great, thank you. And for families that are looking for something fun to do on Halloween, there is the Haunted Boulevard that is in partnership with Kent Station and the city of Kent. That is from 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM on Tuesday, October 31st. So bring the kids down, lots of fun. You may see some of your councilmembers and the mayor down there handing out treats. So hope to see you there. All right, moving on in the agenda. Next up, we have our Public Safety Report. So I'd like to welcome Assistant Chief Kastner.
Would you like to pass some things out to you?
Tony, I would like to take this opportunity to invite you guys to the live. I think it's a nonprofit I manage which is doing this.
Thank you.
Listen, everybody--
I was just looking at that fire. Thank you very much.
Thank you. He's coming.
Thank you.
Sparklers misspelled. All right. Good evening, Councilmember Troutner, Councilmembers. I will be giving the Public Safety Report this evening. Chief Padilla is out of town, police training. He's got a conference he's at. So otherwise, he would be here. I have the opportunity for the report to swear in two of our new officers in front of you. Take that opportunity to present them, give them a little bit of their bio. And then Councilmember Troutner will do the swearing-in ceremony. So if the officers want to come up here, that'd be great. Looking at the display screens available here in the room or online, I will be introducing officers from left to right. We're going to start with Anthony Blackwell. He grew up in Gig Harbor. He then moved to Pullman, Washington, where he lived for eight years while going to school and working there. He attended the Washington State University studying wildlife and ecology and also worked in their maintenance and custodian well-being there. Y Kent and the Kent Police Department. Anthony said after going on a ride along with multiple agencies, Kent appealed the most to him. It's located near a family, so he can see them as well as attend the local events that take place here. Anthony has also enjoyed the people he met here, not only in the Kent Police Department, but also the community while he was doing his ride-along. And Kent has different opportunities that are offered here where he didn't find in other jurisdictions when he did those ride-alongs. The city of Kent is a place where Anthony feels he can grow himself and develop. Anthony enjoys challenging himself with outdoor activities such as backpacking, scuba diving, and exploring new areas. He also enjoys playing softball with his wife and taking her to local events here in the community. Anthony, is there anybody you would like to introduce that's here tonight?
Just my entire family in the back right now. I wanted to introduce one individually, but I'm proud that they're here and happy.
Thank you for coming. Our second one officer is Officer Carl Peterson. He was born and raised on Lee Hill here in Auburn with his mom, stepdad, and two-step siblings. He has lived all around the state, but found himself moving back to the Valley area about five years ago, where he took a job working for 911 Dispatch. Working with the police as a dispatcher ignited his desire to join the police force and serve the community on a face-to-face basis as an officer. Y Kent and the Kent Police Department, there were a lot of reasons why he chose Kent PD. The camaraderie he saw as he dispatched for us, the support from the city, and the initiative to take crime seriously and pursue criminals, and the opportunities for personal growth in a diverse community. Take this moment. Both of them are looking for the growth opportunities, both on a professional level, a personal level, and within the communities. And those are one of the hiring qualities that we really look for. When we have our interviews, it's about fit for the officer in our department and our city and community, as well as we're a fit for them and their lifestyle as they look for the future. So some interesting things about Carl. He has a passion for coaching. He stumbled into coaching almost 10 years ago after his soccer-playing days were behind him. Don't worry, they all leave us. In coaching, he found a fulfillment in providing a positive role model and environment to help youth develop and grow into young adults. He has coached from middle-school-age select teams up to high-school varsity teams. He hopes to be able to return to coaching once he has settled in as an officer. Carl, is there anybody you'd like to introduce?
With me today, I have my mother, Darlene Peterson, and my stepdad, Carl Ball. And people that are here to support me and show me to the man that I am.
All right, now we're ready to make it official. So if you could please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Carl Peterson.
Do solemnly swear--
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance--
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance--
To the United States of America--
To the United States of America.
The state of Washington--
The state of Washington.
And the city of Kent--
And the city of Kent.
That I will uphold the Constitution--
That I will uphold the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States and the state of Washington.
And the laws of the United States and the state of Washington.
And then I will obey the rules and regulations--
And I will obey the rules and regulations--
Of the Kent Police Department.
Of the Kent Police Department.
Congratulations. And then if you could come over here and--
For those that can't see it, they're citing their oath that they just recited, making them sworn-in officers. So they'll be starting their actual street training here next week. And as it's been explained before, it takes some time to get them trained up so they can be solo on the streets here. But we look forward to having them. And we're happy that they chose this community and our department. If you had questions--
All right, any questions for AC Kastner? Anybody? All right, well, that was good news tonight. Thank you very much for being here.
Yes, thank you for giving us that opportunity.
Yep. All right, before we move on to reports from council and staff, we have some special guests in the audience this evening. And I would just like to give them an opportunity to come up and introduce themselves. And maybe we can get a quick photo. And it is Boy Scout troop number 407.
All right.
Hi. All right, I don't know if we can-- They're all so tall. I don't know that you can sit over-- Yeah.
Dude, I'm a camper. I see you in the Kelly Hills.
All right, and I don't know if any of you want to step up to the podium. You want to tell us a little bit about your troop?
Yeah. Mr. MC.
So 247, we help our community a lot. We do various products around. And we even help local communities. Like, we do eagle projects. Yeah. Eagle projects around the community. Like, my eagle project helps the food banks because I raised a garden bed with the help of my troop. And that allowed more food to be produced and to give to less fortunate. Boy Scouts has really taught me leadership and how to work with people of all different skill sets and learning abilities. It's one of the best things. And if you are interested in this, I suggest joining scouts, like starting with Cub Scouts. That really helped a lot to get me interested in scouting and looking around for local troops such as 407. So yeah, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
I'm Stephanie. I'm the Assistant Scout Master. One of the things about 407, we are located in Kent Eastville. During COVID, we lost a lot of Cub Scouts. So the recruitment process of bringing more scouts up is in full force right now. So we would love anybody that's interested in scouting, both female and male. And it's really a leadership program. Like Austin was saying, we do food drives. We do all kinds of different things in the community that help others. And there's even eagle projects. Probably the Scout Master we have is going to have probably 65 eagles by the end of this year because he's been doing it for 20 years. So true 407, you guys, in Kent.
Wonderful, thank you. And I just think we might even have someone, a familiar face, out in the audience. We have Councilmember Larmour's son, who's part of--
Yes, my son is in the audience. I can attest to the leadership skills. He's been with Boy Scouts since he was a Cub Scout. And yeah, 407 has an incredible Scout Master. So really works with the boys and brings them up to be good citizens and great leaders.
Well, good, thank you for joining us. You're welcome to stay. But you are also welcome to leave when you feel like you've seen enough. So, all right, next-- We will move on next to reports from council and staff. Obviously, the mayor's not here this evening. So I will just give a quick report on what we had earlier this evening. We moved forward and adopted our 2024 legislative agenda. We had Brianna, who was our lobbyist, that was here to talk us through the process and represents us very well in Olympia. We also had another opportunity to hear from Paula Pinter, who's our finance director, and talk about the midbiennium adjustment. Council will vote on that at our meeting on November 21st. So that's moving through very well. And next, I will look to our Chief Administrative Officer, Pat Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Council. I have some disappointing news tonight. I think you might have already received notice. But earlier today, the city received notice that the Half Lion Public House at the Riverbend Golf Course will be closing. The city does not have the details regarding the basis for the closure yet. We just got this news today. But we can assure the city council that this was a surprise to us. And it was beyond the control of the city. I want to stress that. So we're very disappointed with this announcement. We really appreciate the partnership we had with Half Lion. And we wish the business ownership well as they go forward. Next steps for us are to review the lease and agreement to determine what our next steps are and how to wrap up that relationship. So there probably will be more coming in the near future. But sorry for that bad news. That ends my report.
All right, well, thank you, Pat. I am going to now look to council members. We are all represented across the region on various committees. And so we will start with Councilmember Michaux to see what she's been up to.
Thank you, Madam President. I too am super disappointed to hear that Half Lion will be closing. They were really great community partners, and they had really great food. So super disappointed about that. I have not had any meetings lately, but I do want to give a little-- I have not had any meetings lately, but I do want to give a little shout-out to the Kent Historical Society. This past Friday, they held a really amazing and fun event. It was a murder mystery event with a small group, and some people dressed up and won awards, and it was just a lot of fun. I may have won Best Dressed. I don't know, it was just a lot of fun, so hopefully they do that again.
Sounds great, thank you, Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I attended King County City's Climate Collaboration Workshop last week, and it was a great conversation between cities, state, and county. And we had some representatives there from the House talking about what their priorities will be in the next legislative session. Some of the conversations were about transportation electrification strategy, including some comments made about partnership between King County and cities to charge their fleet because King County Metro is going electric, and they're going to have charging stations and the possibility of maybe cities partnering with them to use that infrastructure that they're going to be working on. Some of the other conversations were about funding available for charging at rental buildings. They're going to be talking about that in the next legislative session. And some conversations about multifamily housing charges, how they're paying at commercial kilowatts per hour versus the residential charges, and how it impacts the tenants who are living in those buildings. There was a large conversation on best facilities, and I know we have seen some conversations and emails coming through about no to best facilities. So, that's going to be a big part of the energy facility siting council, and they're working on that to, you know, work with jurisdictions and placing those facilities. They are coming, so it's about, you know, what the cities and you can get from it and how we can, you know, make the best of the situation. There was also a conversation on applying for EPA funding for solar programs and how those solar funding will be used, whether it will be used for solar panel, for residential encouragement, or... It was a lot of great ideas from various electeds in the room throughout the county and state. So, we will see the full report coming out soon, and we'll hear more about it in the future, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Larmers.
Thank you. I serve on the King County Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council, and we did not meet in October because of the Washington State Senior Lobby Fall Conference. So this is the conference that the staff and some representatives of the committee attend to get ready for our Fall Lobbying Day for the upcoming legislative session, which we talked about earlier in our meeting as well. So, we will actually meet again in, looks like, November will be our next meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I serve on the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, along with Councilmember Troutner and Council President Boyce. We have been kind of taking it easy. The one thing that's on our plate that's of real importance is trying to find a new location for another station on the west side of the 167. So, that's a big thing, if we can get that. We meet tomorrow at 5:30, Station 78 out in Covington, if you're interested. Okay, that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. For the Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee and the King Conservation District, those have not met since our last meeting, so nothing new to report there. Public Works, we talked about the rate increase. Each year, there's a rate increase from King County, which we have no control over. And then there's also another rate increase a few months later that would come in based on inflation rate, the public charts, different things. And so, those two rates are going to be, they're going to be connected together. And so, instead of having two increases throughout the year, it's going to happen once, and that's going to be at the beginning of January. So that's change you'll see coming up the beginning of the year. And then for the Arts Commission, just a reminder that the Spotlight Series is there. Get your tickets. I already have my ticket to The Queen's Cartoonist, and that one is going to be December 14th, so you can get your tickets too. It's going to be up at KM. And for that particular show, it's a combination of on-the-screen, they have some cartoons going on, there's a band or an orchestra that's going to be playing music along with it. There's going to be different comedy and humor added in, so it sounds like it's going to be a very fun event. And then on the 3rd of December, for the 37th year, the annual Celtic Yuletide Concert is coming back. So, lots of good entertainment coming up, different types of music, check it out. That is it.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. As you can see, your council is very busy working across the region. Next up, we have our public hearing, and we have several public hearings tonight. So, I'm just going to get started, and we'll go through each one individually. And so I will begin. We will hold the second public hearing on the 2024 Mid-Biennium Adjustments. Staff will give a presentation, then I will invite the public to provide testimony, written statements, and other evidence. Public input must relate to the subject of the public hearing. Councilmembers may ask questions during the hearing. If you're here to testify on this matter, please, or want to present written statements or evidence, please sign up with a clerk at the front table. The public hearing on the 2024 Mid-Biennium Budget Adjustment is now open. I would like to ask Paula Painter to make a presentation on this matter. Welcome, Paula.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. Thank you, members of City Council. I am here with the second public hearing on the 2024 Mid-Biennium Budget Adjustment. The first biennial budget adjustment hearing was held on September 19th, and then the mayor did present her proposed budget at a special council meeting on September 26th. This budget includes changes to both the operating and the capital budgets. The total proposed expenditure budget is $443.9 million of that. $121.9 million of that is within the general fund. The proposed budget does include the use of $1 million of the general fund balance instead of the originally planned $3.1 million use of fund balance, as we'd seen increases in both the revenue and expenditure sides of the budget, but more so on the revenue side of the budget. This budget also includes a revenue budget of $99,990 in opioid settlement funds with expenditures that would be used to support the community court program. Overall, you can see of the $443.9 million expenditure budget, it covers a variety of funds from our general fund, special revenue fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund, enterprise funds, internal service funds, and other funds. Those are much smaller funds. The 2024 Biennial Budget Adjustment, when we went into this process, the message that we carried forward was the status quo budget, similar to the 2023-24 Biennial Budget Process. We did take a look at the baseline budget numbers and made adjustments to both the revenue and expenditure side to be able to align more closely with our current trends and also other known factors. We've made changes to salary adjustments, the health insurance plan. We also made changes to the retirement contribution rates and our insurance funds. And I'd be happy to take any questions, if you have any.
Any questions from council? All right. I would now like to invite the public to provide testimony, written statements, or other evidence. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Kim, has anyone signed up?
No.
All right, since we have no one signed up, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All right. Oh, do I need to ask for written copies?
Were there any written?
Oh, is there... Sorry, were there any written copies?
There were none.
Okay. So with that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I think I have a motion on the floor.
Moved and seconded?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this hearing is now closed. We'll be better on the next one. We will now hold the public hearing on the 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Plan. Staff will give a presentation, and then I'll invite the public to provide testimony, written statements, and other evidence. Public input must be related to the subject of the public hearing. Councilmembers may ask questions during the hearing. If you're here to testify on this matter or present written statements or evidence, please sign up with a clerk at the front table. The public hearing for the 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Plan is now open. Paula will make a presentation on this.
Great, thank you again. This is our second public hearing of the 2024-29 Capital Improvement Plan. The first public hearing took place on Tuesday, October 3rd. The Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan is part of the Growth Management Act that the legislature passed back in 1990. The plan includes the 2024 revenues and expenditures that are part of the mayor's proposed budget. The ultimate plan is actually a six-year plan that has the city's capital needs to meet their facility needs mapped out, and each year, we come back and we update those projects annually. Upon adoption of the CIP, it'll be incorporated into the city's comprehensive plan. The overall capital improvement plan for the six years is $225.2 million, of which the $56.1 million is included in the 2024 budget. And do you have any questions?
Any questions from councilor's staff? All right, now I would like to invite the public to provide testimony, written statements, or other evidence. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Kim, has anyone signed up?
No.
All right, is there any written comments?
None.
All right, seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is now closed. We will now hold the public hearing on the 2023 Tax Levy for the 2024 Budget. Staff will give a presentation, then I will invite the public to provide testimony, written statements, and other evidence. Public input must relate to the subject of the public hearing. Councilmembers may ask questions during the hearing. If you're here to testify on this matter or present written statements or evidence, please sign up with the city clerk at the front table. The public hearing on the 2023 Tax Levy for the 2024 Budget is now open, and Paula Painter will present on this matter.
All right, thank you again. So this is our first and only hearing on the 2024 Property Tax Levy. As you can see, King County has estimated the assessed valuation at $32.4 billion, which is about seven-tenths of 1% greater than last year. As you know, we're limited to 1% growth in our revenues, and when you factor that in, that is showing our levy rate at $1.06, we'll stop, we'll go all the way out, but $1.06 for 1,000 assessed valuation. In 2024, if we assume that houses are worth 2.5% more than they are today, that would have them at the $600,000 level. That would equate to the cost of property tax per year of $640. Just as a reminder, the property tax that the city receives is just a fraction of the total property tax bill that a resident pays. Of their bill, about 11% of it comes to the City of Kent. The others go to other organizations such as King County and the School District, et cetera. So, here, it is $6.40. At this point, I would be happy to take any questions that you might have.
All right. Any questions from councilor's staff? All right, I would like to invite the public to provide public testimony, written comments, or other evidence. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Kim, has anyone signed up?
No.
All right, do we have any written comments to submit?
None.
All right, seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you so much, Paula. We will now hold the public hearing on the Comprehensive Plan Capital Facilities Amendment to Incorporate the City Capital Improvement Plan. Auburn, Kent, Highline, and Federal Way School District's Capitals' Facilities Plans and the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority's Capital Improvement Plan. That's a lot. Staff will give a presentation, then I will invite the public to provide testimony, written statements, and other evidence. Public input must be related to the subject of the public hearing. Councilmembers may ask questions during the hearing. If you're here to testify on this matter or present written statements or evidence, please sign up with a clerk at the front table. The public hearing on the Comprehensive Plan Capital Facilities Amendment to Incorporate the City Capital Improvement Plan, Auburn, Kent, Highline, and Federal Way School District's Capital Facilities Plan, and the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority's Capital Improvement Plan is now open. I would like to ask Callie McGrew to make a presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. It's nice to meet you all. My name is Callie McGrew, and I'm the newest member on Kristen Holdsworth's team in ECD, and I will be presenting to you Agenda Item Number 6, letters D and E. For the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, you may recall in previous years that the city has had four or five different ordinances because we used to break them out individually based off of the city, school, and fire topics. However, we've consolidated those ordinance to only having a Comprehensive Plan Capital Facilities Element to incorporate topics and a second ordinance to update the code for consistency. The amendments to the Comprehensive Plan include the City Capital Improvement Plan, School District's Capital Facilities Plans, and Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority's Capital Facilities Plan. We are required by state law to update the Comprehensive Plan to reflect the most recent Capital Improvement Plan. And for school districts, we incorporate the most recent Capital Facilities Plans for each school district that serves the City of Kent. This year, we received information from four school districts, Auburn, Federal Way, Kent, and Highline. And as part of the Capital Facilities Plan, the school districts take into account current and future enrollment, which informs the next calendar year's impact fees. And as a reminder, the school districts are required to use a state equation in determining these fees. Kent and Highline will not be collecting any impact fees in the coming year for single-family or multifamily. Federal Way is not implementing fees for single-family units, but multifamily will increase to about $7,000. Auburn's impact fees for single-family are decreasing to $5,597, and the fees will remain the same for multifamily, which is $9,913. The city has a cap on the maximum allowable school impact fees, and that's adjusted annually based on the construction cost index value, which was increased by 2% this year. The Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority also sends their CIP, which includes changes to impact fees. The impact fees for single-family units are decreasing by about $650 and are increasing for multifamily units by about $400. And for comparison, last year, impact fees for single-family units increased and multifamily units decreased. Commercial and industrial per square foot is staying the same, and Puget Sound Fire also has other uses such as medical clinics and educational facilities, among others. However, they re-categorize this year, so we're unable to do a direct one-to-one comparison, but they are all roughly the same as last year. And that'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? All right, I would now like to invite the public to provide testimony, written statements, or other evidence. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Kim, has anyone signed up?
No.
All right, do we have any written comments to submit?
None.
Seeing none, is there a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right, there's a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is now closed. We will move on to our last public hearing of the evening. We will now hold the public hearing on Kent City Code Amendments for School Impact Fees and Fire Impact Fees. Staff will give a presentation, and then I will invite the public to provide testimony, written statements, and other evidence. Public input must relate to the